Calls for a Confederate statue known as Silva Sound to be removed were met by pushback today by counter demonstrators saying that Jackson County Monument should stay. News 13's Kimberly King reports on both sides and police press it on hand to keep the two sides at a distance.
No justice?
No peace!
Demonstrators peacefully marched around downtown Silva.
Who was his name?
George Floyd!
The gathering organized by the group Reconcile Silva, hoping to convince local leaders to remove the Confederate monument at the base of the historic Jackson County courthouse nicknamed Silva Sam.
This country has never respected block and bond bodies.
We have several town commissioners here and I want to say thank you.
Silva Town Commissioner Greg McPherson, he says, was present.
I've not had conversation with one Jackson County Commissioner who has been elected to lead.
Well, not as a community divider, so take it down.
How many folks have lived here and have generations here going back all the way to Civil War?
Just 300 feet away from the monument, another group gathered in opposition. They say to tear down the monument would be erasing their history.
My heritage runs deep.
Jim Ash, the former Jackson County Sheriff, talked of his family, who have been here for eight generations, and he says he feels the monument is an important part of history.
So is this important to me? You doggone right it is.
Mike Paris says there was one reason he and others came.
Because they said they were taking down the monument today. Thank God it didn't happen.
Police made their presence known.
I think it went really well. We're peaceful. We were honest about the message we wanted to get across.
And for those who marched, they say they hope the national conversation about monuments like this will be discussed in the rural county, helping to sway the conversation that divides a community here. In Silva, at the Jackson County Courthouse, Kimberly King, News 13.
Ma'am?
I'd like to set you straight.
Okay.
When I heard that speech, when I heard Jason Lueker stand up on Tuesday and say that statue is interwoven in white supremacy, that should have been enough for the county commissioners and this council to vote immediately to remove it. You have a county employee in a public forum talking about the dedication of that statue, that it is the purest Anglo-Saxon blood. If you are a supporter of that statue, there's no way around it. You are a supporter of white supremacy. If you are a supporter of white supremacy, that means you believe because of the color of your skin, because your blood was not intermingled with African blood, or Cuban blood, or Indian blood, that you are better and superior. Let's look at it for what it is. Let's acknowledge this and let's look at it face to face as a community. It's time to stop justifying states' rights. Yeah, you know what it was states' rights? It was the right to own the black race as slaves and treat them as property and cut their feet off when they tried to run away and whip them when they were caught. And let's take a step back, because that white supremacy doesn't just stop with the Confederacy. That white supremacy transcends all the way from 1865 to 2020. We just saw a black man with the police officer with his knee on the neck. How you all can sit here and justify? You don't want to believe it. You don't want to deal with it, and I'm not about it. We're going to deal with this square to its face. If the commission won't take a vote to remove that statue, the commission is speaking a very clear message. Do you know why it was on the courthouse? Because the courthouse was the place historically where blacks went to get equal justice. That's why it's on a courthouse. It's sending a very clear message. And you know what that message is? That message is you don't matter. If you're a person of color, you don't matter. Let's look at this for what it is, gentlemen. Let's look at this for what it is. Why on a courthouse? Why Confederate? You're saying that it's not about slavery? You're saying the 17-year-olds who fought against their land, they were coupled and linked with the slave owners. They were coupled and they were linked with men who sold the black race like a pair of shoes. Think about that. Think about this. We're here debating whether a white supremacy statue belongs on a courthouse. Have we lost our minds? And then we want to sit and justify it by Jesus and sit and justify it by God. God's not about this. This isn't the God that I serve. He's not about this. Now come on, gentlemen. Come on, county commissioners, what's it going to be? If you're going to let that statue stay, you are drawing a line in the sand, and I want you to know our response is we matter. Our response is if you leave that statue, we're going to continue to protest. For people to say that those protesters are being paid, I was out with them on Saturday, I'll be out with them every single day. I love my First Amendment right. It's the strongest right that we have as citizens, as private citizens. That's why that racist statue needs to go with the UDC, or the Sons of Confederacy, or wherever, so y'all can drape yourselves in Confederate flags, you can sing the Dixie, you can play the Dixie, you can enjoy each other and remember the good old times, because that statue is the patriarch of racism. Now let's look at it for what it is. I'm about tired of coming here and hearing all this whitewashed history, because that's exactly what it is. When we look at the black race and we look at the heinous crimes that were committed on black people, we were lynched, we were beaten, we were shot. We were slaves and you didn't eat, they bashed your teeth in because you were their investment. Let's look at the ugly history for what it is and stop sitting here and trying to justify that ugliness. Look square, look at it square in the face. And you know what? The same thing that our ancestors did in the 1960s, if you're not going to take that statue down, we're going to do the same technique, systemic economic pressure. You don't value us, we don't have to spend our money here. We will go to Charlotte, we will order online. Now you better think about what's your, what the message that you're sending, this commission, county commissioners, and this council. What message are you going to send to the people and citizens of Gaston County?
That's your flag.
And Gaston County.
And I think Commissioner Woody at one point had asked, sort of started this discussion by asking that we consider maybe putting together a task force, and that was sort of why we put this on the agenda to come back today to debate the merits of that and determine if we want to do that and who we would want to put on that. And I guess I'll just defer to Commissioner Woody at this time, just to see if you still feel the way that you did. Are you still asking for this board to consider that and then let's see if there are other options from the board of things that we may want to consider.
Well, thank you Chairman Matt Mahan. I did recommend that and the motivation for me to do that was recognizing the fact that we are five white individuals and that our county is more diverse than that. And my thought was that by having a task force and inviting people of various persuasions to come together to have a respectful discussion, people obviously from different ethnic groups, racial groups, also historic society, genealogical society, and others, my thought was that we could hopefully come to some common ground where we could move forward respectfully. Since I brought that up, I've had a lot of personal criticism, and I understand that and that's part of the process. And I totally have thought a lot about it. Some people have said, "You were elected to make the decision, you need to step up and do that." My thought was never to abdicate that role. The task force would be an information gathering, hopefully strategic planning type of situation so that we could get ideas from various individuals. And then we would take on that responsibility that we are charged with as elected officials to make the final decision. I will say this, I have gotten lots of emails from a wide spectrum of opinions and some very good suggestions. I think there's so many positive thoughtful people in Jackson County. They've come up with some very good ideas about how we could address our monument in a respectful way. But I really, in answer to your question, I want to defer to the board what you all think. I have some dear friends in this community that I wanted to suggest to be on that task force. I would never want to put them in the situation where they would be attacked and treated disrespectfully. And so I'm kind of rethinking and I really want to defer to my fellow commissioners to have your input on if you think that would be a positive thing or would it be more divisive? And so I just, in response, does that answer your question?
Yeah, it's a good start.
Okay, thank you.
And just as a reminder, not that I have to remind each one of us, like I reminded the public, but there are no decisions to be made today.
That's right.
This is just a point of discussion, a starting point. We are not bound to take any action. We won't be voting on anything. We're not necessarily going to be voting on anything at the next meeting. It just gives us an opportunity to discuss a topic that is very important and has received a lot of feedback and recognition within our community. And it's a timely topic that right now that's on a lot of people's minds. I think they're looking to us for some kind of action potentially, and that may or may not happen. We just have to see what the board thinks. Other comments? Anybody else have a way in at this moment after Commissioner Woody's request to see how the board members feel about the task force?
Yes.
Well, I think I've heard some of the same comments you have. There's a Commissioner around there, yes, have a task force. Could be dangerous to be on a task force. It could be more positive, it could be more divisive. So don't have one. So I'm just reiterating, I think. Board of Commissioners, go ahead and just make the decision and then... One that I've seen in a few more emails probably in the last couple of days is about putting it on the ballot. I don't even know if that's something we can do, but that is one that I don't, I think you probably all get the same emails.
That's true.
That has been another idea that I think with your task force and gathering information, that was one of the things I had been thinking about too, is if we do the task force, that you got to give the task force a charge, you know, here's your duties.
Specific, yes.
It's not that you're the, yes, here's your duties, here's your timeline. Maybe if people knew, if we went that route, if they knew they weren't the ultimate decision-makers, you know, that it is about getting information from all sides of the issue to present to the board, I don't know if that is positive or more divisive or not. I'm, you know, still thinking about this a lot.
And one of the other questions I've been asked beyond the scope of the task force is when are y'all voting on this? And my reply has been, well, we don't even have it on the agenda. It's not even a topic to vote on. There has not been, I mean, there's been a lot of informal comments by the public about how they feel for the statue or against the statue, but there really has not been any kind of formal request. I know I've heard discussion that the town of Silva may be voting upon a resolution that would come to this board. It's my understanding. I don't think that's taken place yet, has it? Does anybody?
Yeah, they voted on something at the last meeting. I think they talked about it to be on a work session or anything.
Yeah, I think they, what they voted on was not to have any kind of Confederate symbols or something in the town, something, I'm not really sure the extent of that, but I know that they're supposed to be debating and voting on whether or not to send a resolution to this board concerning the statue location. So that's something that could trigger an official request for us then to take action.
Yes.
And at that point, maybe we just continue to speak with citizens and talk about how and gather input. That's just a thought that I offered. Any other thoughts or comments?
So what is it we're commenting on?
Well, the original conversation was about Commissioner Woody's task force.
Is that what we're commenting on right now?
Well, you can comment on anything.
No, 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 I don't think she's allowed to put that. That's what she wanted. I think she, I don't think, I know that she has very good intentions. I think if it's done correctly, I don't know what that would be. It might be good, but I think there's so many possibilities and so many doors with bad relationships between people. I've asked people, "Would you serve?" "I ain't serving." He was the first to, said that, thought that might was a good idea, but then he said, "Would you?" "No, I'm not serving." I think we need to slow down about all this. And I think we need to be very careful about what we say and what we do. My whole prayer, adults don't say prayer because some people don't believe prayer, but my prayer is that hopefully some way we could use this situation that we find ourselves in to compromise and bring us all more together than apart. I think we all got more in common than we have, what term we use. I think we got more things in common than that, than we have a tongue common between us. And my whole thing to be, whether I'm standing on an island by myself is to try to do that. I feel real strong about this. I hear people say that some of the people in this community, or some of the people in this country are too sensitive about this. And most times when you hear that, it's talking about people that are not white, that they're too sensitive. Well, I don't think we should ever say that they're too sensitive. I don't know if this is time for me to say things I want to say or not, big chairman, but I feel real strong about that. And I probably said this to D-20 Y'all, I don't know who's listening out there, but at D-20 Y'all, when you get a little book from the Simmer Earl 1945, and they got all the people that died in the war of World War II, my dad was in Normandy, and luckily he didn't die on the beach, I believe, where he was at. And you look at that book, and there's always people that died in the war from Jackson County. And I don't remember being any witness, but these men and where they were from and whose son they were, and what theater they followed in, and where they were killed and maybe where they were buried overseas. And then you go back to that book, there's five fellows I believe killed that were black. You're in the back of the book, because they can't bend the middle of all the black fellows. And if you say people's, black folks are too sensitive about some of this, they ought to be sensitive about stuff like that. I played left guard on the football team, the first black that ever played here in Jackson County. And he'd come to the line of scrimmage as a quarterback, and I'd have to sit there listening to linebackers on the other side calling the N-word. Maybe he shouldn't be this sensitive. And I'd like to say, there are going to be a vote, I'd say somewhere along the way, who's been asked for it now or not, on what to do with that statue over that hill, Mr. Black. I've got as many reasons not to see that statue moved as anyone. My great-granddad, that could be him standing up there, he was a foot soldier, a grunt, or whatever they call them through the years. But hopefully, people I've talked to, I said, "Don't take that statue down. Don't ask to take the statue down." I talk about compromise. What can we do to do something on that hill that would make a difference, maybe with everyone, instead of making the, making the case wider? That's what I try to do. Hell, I don't want people mad at me, but if I get mad, they get mad. I wish that they'd make it a decision or something like this. Whatever decision I make, and I'm sure y'all do, it's not going to be political. This is going to be in the heart.
That's right.
Because I can, I can be, I can touch somebody being mad at me if they so feel. But I don't want to be mad at myself. When I look in the mirror, I know it. I'm doing what I'm still following in life. If our forefathers could compromise on some of the things they had to compromise on, whether big states come in, slavery or no slavery, or out-of-count slaves, or as people or property or whatever to get representation, oh surely the gosses sitting down here today, we can compromise without, and not fight another civil war.
Any other comments from the board members?
I would just like to say that I am thinking long and hard about this and I'm listening to people and I hope that we can come to a place where we don't forget the past, but we reach toward the future. And our future can be so bright and so supportive. We have so many wonderful people here in Jackson County, and I'm hearing from them daily on both sides of this issue. And I want people to know that, those like Commissioner Neat said, if you're stigmatizing people because they're them on the other side, whichever side you're on, we need to be talking about us. We are citizens of Jackson County. We are us. And somehow we can, I believe this with my whole heart, that we can find a place where we can reach toward the future and be respectful and find a solution that does recognize our past, but moves past that to our bright future, where every single citizen feels safe and valued in Jackson County.
Any other comments or questions?
Coach, you're going to, I don't know if I want to ask, like you said, you wanted to say, what do you think a compromise might, maybe that's a conversation we should have?
No.
What would a compromise look like?
That's a great question.
I say what a compromise would look like. First of all, before you compromise on anything, you've got to have people who's willing to compromise. And the case in front of them has to be so important that they know something has to be done about this, whatever the situation is. I've been reading a little bit, whether y'all realize or not, I'll bring last night, Conciliation with the Colonies. Lord Byrd wrote this little book, and he's talking to the parliament, the whole book's about him talking to parliament, and he's talking about, it's right before the War of Independence, Revolutionary War. He's trying to tell his colleagues that importantly, the colonies are of us, even number-wise, you know? So I guess he's asking for a compromise. We need to get together instead of fighting economically, commercially, in every way that we're important to England. I'd like to see a monument left. Left could be gone. I'd like to see a monument stay where it's at. How about Doug Myers that died in Lebanon, Beirut, along with, I like, 248 old rings and barracks there by Ba'abah? I like trips, no wonder. Hey, trips, ain't nothing wrong with that deal too. Bobby Parson was, he died on his birthday in Vietnam, Kamel, during the week. His two brothers had already died. His dad pled with the Selective Service Board to not take him, because he'd already lost two sons. So he loses his only son, and they were poor as hell. So he ended up, a lot of folks died of our support because I didn't have a way to go to college or get out of it or whatever. I'd like for him to be remembered. My daughter didn't die, but she served her service. That's where I like to see this brand stuck together. I mean, I know boys that died in, up in Glendale, Vietnam. Now, people died in whatever war, I guess we've had people in Jackson County that died. But I'd like to see something up there to commemorate them. And then just to be completely truthful, I'd like to see us take that flag off that stone up there. This is where you get hate mail and stuff. Every time I see it, every time I see that flag, I have no good thoughts. And that's not always been true in my life, because I remember being in Western Carolina and seeing the Dixie, the band playing Dixie at the ballgame, and we all just absolutely, that was almost the highlight of the game, other than the game, because everybody stood and sang Dixie. I just, I didn't know the words to this song, so I guess I needed those. We sang Dixie and then all at once, when Henry Logan came, the first black or so came to Western Carolina University about '64, someone decided that maybe wasn't right for us to sing Dixie. I don't remember, well, I never did remember anybody getting upset or anything about it, but they just quit. But through the years, I see that flag and it, I can see where it bothered blacks, because it bothers me. And when I see it, I don't, I think, and I'm, I might could be very much wrong in this, but when I see that flag, stuck it down near the post of a truck, I really don't look at that. I never did wonder, I bet that person realized he's been in the South. That's why he's got that flag. They just enjoyed being in the South, and he enjoys our weather and our way of living and our life here, colored dreams, whatever. I literally don't think of that when I see that. I don't think good thoughts when I see that. don't think of that when I see that. I don't think the thoughts when I see that flag. That statue's fine, but I don't like that flag. I really don't. And if everybody in the county likes it, I think that's great, which it may be. I don't like it, and I will not say otherwise. So my compromise would be do something with that, put a flag up and try to honor it. Everybody's ever fought, everybody would have fought back in the future.
No, that's too long. No, it's good. I agree. You came by the flag. Absolutely.
And I can agree that the only part I would disagree about is that monument has a historical perspective representing Jackson County's role in the American Civil War. And it's not about Vietnam. And it's not about World War I or II, or Korea, or Desert Storm, or Afghanistan, or anything else. It was specifically placed there about a one period, a one military conflict in our history, the worst conflict in our history in civil war. So I agree with the concept of you could place a flag on the front of it, a bronze flag to, to cover up the flag, but instead of it becoming something other than what it is, it would become a monument to the Civil War and the Jackson County's involvement. The black can talk about Jackson County's civil war history. It could talk about what companies come from Jackson County, where the troops came from Jackson County, the decision of Jackson County, the vote that was held, whether or not to enter the war, and, and talk about the, it could, it could cover the, almost a complete synopsis of Jackson County as to the Civil War. You could put out front of the statue, an information board that showed the 1915 installation and what that meant to the community, and also use that as an opportunity to educate people about Jim Crow and that movement and whether, let people for themselves decide, instead of someone trying to tell you what your history is. Let people for themselves stand there and read it and make reasonable, educated determinations about what history is. That I can support. I'm, I'm firmly in, in favor of keeping the statue. I do not want to take the statue down. I think there are ways, like Commissioner Neat said, we can use it as a tool to look at our past, to honor our past, but also use it as a tool to help us, I love what Commissioner Woody has said, to look to the future.
Well, that is what compromises are.
Yes.
But I want to, here's another compromise. In my understanding, there's some of these conversations have gone on between some of the people who's in groups, is moving and relocating it to somewhere else. Whether that's in the historical part of the library or someplace else outdoors.
Well. I think, I don't think I've considered, thought about this in any order. The five of us, or about the four of us, I really don't. I think we've all thought about this real good, it almost bothers me sometimes. Well, it's like, you know, when we all talk about this, the people on the arena, just doing the, playing the game, doing the fighting, I think a lot of time they don't, maybe our constituents don't realize how the people in the arena, being us, how seriously we take them, some things, and how we pray about them, and go to bed thinking about them, get them, more thinking about them, and wondering about them, and making decisions in their mind. This is how I feel, then changing the decision, because you listen to other people here at times. Only thing I, I wonder about, which may is, I can find putting cemeteries somewhere. And I might be somebody like to have it put in the cemeteries. I could see that being a place that, that thing could be abused. I could see it being somewhere that could be abused. They might as well, while the dirt is not going to stop them and stuff. And it says in the, in the legislation, doesn't, doesn't it about it, should be put in a place, it's probably that there's a place to improve it.
Equal honor, visibility, and accessibility. Is the wording of the statute.
So I'd say, Grace, I don't have where you put it, make that statement.
Well, I, I took my engineer hat on, and somebody suggested move it indoors, and I don't have any freaking teeth, but would you be able to do that strategically, in an existing building? But that's a thing that you're, there is part of the conversation.
Any other thoughts or comments? Like I said, today is just for us to start the process of discussing. Commissioner Luger, for the benefit of, we can't see you. Any comments?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, really no comments. I mean, there's all, there's some great points, and, you know, both sides have cheered some aspects of it, and, you know, it's, it's not a easy decision by any means, and, you know, I have so many friends that are many different nationalities. I mean, you know, is, Coach Lee said there, you know, about a prayer, it'd be his prayer, but, you know, I'll even take it as, you know, and we stand before God, it's not going to matter whether we're black, white, red, yellow, brown, or whatever. It's, we must stand before Him and have to answer before our decisions we've made and how we've treated others individually. And, you know, that's my belief. And so, you know, I do agree with your remarks, Mr. Chairman, very much so. And I do believe there is something we can do. I do. You know, what is that? I don't have that answer. But I do believe there is something we can do.
And Mr. Luger?
Yes, sir.
When you say, I think there's something we can do, but I don't know exactly what it is, that's okay. There is something we can do that will probably make this really, really good, a good thing. And we may not have enough sense between the five of us to ever figure it out. But that doesn't mean it's not there. There's usually an answer, and sometimes it takes a long time to find it. But that, that is our call. It's simply find out what that is that could make people feel good about, about that situation.
And, and you know, Coach, and maybe that is that, we do put it out there before the people as in, you know, as just in, as we're talking, and the calls and the emails, and say, you know, look, I think we're in agreement that we don't want to see it come off the hill, but what can we do to change the situation? What do you, what do you recommend? What is, you know, what would you recommend as a compromise or conditions of change that we could do, you know? And there may be somebody that has that perfect answer for us.
So do we need a task force then?
Yeah. What is this?
Listen, I think it's a listening. I think it's not, not hastily, but to take some time and listen and continue the dialogue.
That war was terrible, terrible thing. The most terrible thing in your business when you start, when you fight with your brother and fight each other. And that's what the Civil War was, we were fighting each other. And I just wonder what it'd been like. I'm gonna push you if I'm into it. I just wonder what it'd been like if it had been Gendysburg when, you know, the Southern Army came in from the north at the battlefield. And the north came in from the south. I always thought, well, it's safe, you know, but it's helped the way the ground lays and all this. Old Pinky, yeah, he's, he had all his soldiers down there in the big George. They were going to strike the northern soldiers across the wheat fields, which, and the wheat fields ran up to Cemetery Ridge, which was high ground. And, as this is told, and I reckon, told about this, that there's one soldier sitting down. All of once his rabbit run out from a little pile of some grass or something there. One of the soldiers looked at the other one and said, run, rabbit, run. I'd run too, if I could. But this is the thing we're in, it's, we can't run away from. It is a terrible thing that we're talking about happening. So, no, we can't, we can't, can't get our history. Those soldiers went across that, they were slaughtered when they went across that wheat field, went up to Cemetery Ridge, and cannon fire was like almost buckshot in it. Swallowed them. But it's a terrible thing. If they can run across that wheat field, we can figure this out somewhere too. That is what I'd call something.
Okay, item F, are there any other discussions today with the board? Any, any board member have an item they want to bring up?
I just will say, I was, I was requested by a group to bring the petition that they signed Saturday. So I do have these here, and I don't know if anyone can see them on camera, but these were from.
The Pro Statue Movement.
Yes.
That gave the suit.
They, they asked me to bring these. So these are Jackson County residents whose names are on here. I did bring these, and I will have them here. If anybody wanted to see them, they could talk to our clerk.
Any other additional items that any Commissioner has to bring us to the board?
Y'all probably all know this.
Commissioner Neat?
Yes, I'm sorry. Everybody probably knows this, the town department, they're giving Grover Ferris tests. It's actually outside. You just pull in and go burn it. It's free, doesn't cost anything. And I went by there this morning not to get a test, but to inquire about it. And they had folks coming in continually, but they want a huge line lead. It takes about a week to get back to that place. And for some reason, you were to need a test and need the results instantly, almost, in a day, that are spaces in town that does that. And they said, your insurance pay for it. Well, gosh, when they say your insurance pays for it.
Yes, they do.
But I did. I hope most people probably know that.
And the Health Department does that on two states.
Just two.
Just two states right now.
Any other comment or question? All right, do I have a motion to adjourn the court session?
Still may.
All right, you got a motion, is it a second? All the papers say aye.
Aye.
All opposed and aye, the aye is aye.